Let's call to order the work session for the Coates County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, April 29th, we're meeting in the Supervisors Hearing Room. Soon to air is 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend in person or via Teams. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams or the computer mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform, discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Roll call District One.
Was me easier.
District Two.
Gomez.
And District Three, Antonorius here. All Supervisors are present and in person. And we will go to our Kansas Traverse. Ms. Gilman is back, so.
So today we have Engineering Division, Engineering and Natural Resources. Jackie Watkins is our County Engineer and Director of Engineering and Natural Resources. So she'll go over. This is not flood control, right? This is just engineering. Okay. We'll lead into flood.
Yeah, I thought it was everything, the whole department.
Everything is everything.
Is, uh.
Yeah, flood controls.
Yeah. Flood control is a separate, separate account then, right?
Yeah. It's just talk generally.
It's one of those things, what are they called? Special Districts. Special Districts.
Yeah.
So we'll talk generally about it as how it affects the budget, but.
Because it was in.
Yes.
It's in.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah, consider that a flood people district when it comes to budget approval.
So this is the Engineering section. Next slide. Okay. And so we have three different fund accounts, her fund accounts with grants. So I just put up the highlights of some of the projects we have. If there's anything specific on any of the line items from the budget that you were sent, you know. But we have a million dollar grant funding for the Douglas Port of Entry. That's from the City of Douglas, from their eight million dollar grant that they have. Motion Road is, we had a DCR that was done in 2022. Been designed on that project. It's 1.7 million for design. That's seven point eight miles of roads. Construction cost is going to be about 50 million. We have a six million dollar grant that we'll talk about when we get to the grant fund account. We'll have about three million dollars left from the grant after buying right away that we can do a small portion of a project on Motion Road. So we picked a location that has site distance on Garden Avenue.
Garden.
Yeah. Garden Valley Road that has site distance issues when somebody's at that intersection. So we'll do that. Davis Road, multiple projects on Davis Road. But the activity 4115 is from Central to 191. The construction cost is about nine million and we've put in for a grant on that project. Structures is bridges and culverts. We're going to be doing a culvert on Liston Canyon Road itself that's north of Douglas. And then 4118 is AC Mill and Fill that's repaving part of Kansas Settlement Road. And the total project cost would be 30 million.
So why is the engineering triple on that?
On which one?
The, the one, the Kansas Settlement Road.
Well, it's, we have one and a half millions because that's all the funds we have. But to do the whole road, we would need 30 million.
No, no, I got you. So, so I'm trying to get what, what your engineering studies are. Regardless of how big the road is, shouldn't it be about the same? Or am I missing something?
So that's like one and a, about one and a half million for a mile. And on Davis, Motion Road, if you're trying to compare those costs, it's because Motion Road has bridges and a lot of culverts that need for drainage. On Kansas Settlement Road, we're not doing any culverts.
Yeah, that's. So what is, what is the 1.5 for? Is that just for you to do the engineering?
No, no, no. On Motion, that would be to.
No, Kansas.
Construction.
On Kansas Settlement?
I'm sorry, Kansas Settlement.
Kansas Settlement, yeah. That's to do a mile, that would give us about a mile of new.
I'm, I'm.
Construction versus design. The others were designed, the AC Mill and Fill is Kansas Settlement Construction.
So why isn't this in the public works budget for construction?
Because I do construction on rehab's projects. Because it needs an engineer and you have to have an engineer do your plans.
I got that, the plan. That's what I'm trying to separate here. What, what, one is laying asphalt or chip seal, the other one is doing.
It goes out to bid, right?
It goes out to bid.
So it's not our, our guys doing the work.
Okay.
Going out to a contractor.
Good question. So what, I'm trying to get, what, what is the one and a half million for? The one and a half million is to put out an RFP?
No, 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 to do construction.
Okay.
We're having a definitions challenge here.
Hire contractor to go out mill one by.
That's an RFP, right? So to put it.
Well, it's not what I call it.
But we've already done that, right?
So you already have a contractor on the hook?
No.
Okay.
We don't.
Okay.
When we go out for construction, it's not an RFP, it's request for proposal. Okay, you could call it an RFP. We do a construction contract and we would go out for bids to let a contract out to do the project, correct?
Okay, so is that what the one and a half million is for?
Yes.
All right, it's not actually doing anything physical. It's doing an engineering design review?
Engineering and design will be done in-house.
So the 1.5 is for the construction? That we're going to pay another vendor or vendor to complete, is that?
Right, yes.
So that's putting asphalt down.
I'm still not getting it. I apologize if I'm missing something.
So is your question, why is it that, that part of the contracting under engineering versus?
Yeah, so, so if you're not doing the work and you're just doing an RF, RFQ, or RFQ, whatever you want to call it, and if you're request for quote, request for proposal, whatever, why is it one and a half million? What is that? That's what I'm getting at. Is that you going out with four guys to map out the road, measure the width, make sure the crown is so much and doing all that, and then drafting it up to put it in the RFP? So that somebody bids on it? Is that what it is? Or is it something else? Is it some other?
RF, what you call the RFP.
Or RFP.
We didn't pay that. We put pay the one and a half million to a contractor to actually do the physical work.
So the design has already been done?
The design will be done in-house.
You're paying the guy one and a half million to go chip seal the road?
No, to asphalt.
To asphalt, too. So that one and a half million is to go asphalt?
Correct.
Okay, now I understand.
But like a mile, you said? How many miles?
So Kansas Settlement is 20 miles, would need about 30 million dollars to do the whole road. So if we, every time we have an asphalt company come in and do it, their mobilization cost is two to $300,000 just to show up. That's what it costs them to move their modern equipment. So if we save our money and hold that and don't actually spend that, and we hold it for two or three years, then we'll have three or four million dollars that we could actually do three million, fresh three miles of road at a more efficient cost than to do one and a half or one mile a year.
Because you're leaving 200K at the time they come out there.
Two to 300, 400,000, just depends. And then typically, because there's no asphalt plants close to Kansas Settlement, asphalt's coming out of Tucson. If you have a large enough project, they will mob in their own hot plant and create the asphalt in the Wilcox area. And then that, then you have more thing through, you know, but that if you have, you know, three or four miles to do instead of just one. But it's a holding place that we still need to do some mill and fill because Kansas Settlement is deteriorating.
Is Kansas Settlement Road about as low in elevation as you could possibly have? Like, you can't put culverts under, or they just fill up and the water still come over the top of the road?
Water's still going to flow over the top of the road. We do have a few places that we have culverts because we have ditches each side that go east-west. But most of it, like when Turkey Creek flows over Kansas Settlement, where it flows over about a mile wide, and you're not going to contain all that water and put in the culvert. So most of it is going to flow.
That's what I thought.
Yes. Most of it is sheet flow over the road.
Yeah, Paulie walks that swim across the river, I think.
Yep, and it can flow for like two weeks, you know, like a foot of water.
So seems like the, the ultimate way to go would be to elevate the road. And that would cost millions of dollars, I'm sure. And then you did, then your culverts should work if you had culverts.
Right. And then you would have to have a lot of right-of-way for the backwater that's going to be flooding a road that wasn't flooded before. If you raise the road three feet to get a culvert underneath, then that's three foot of water going back into someone's property. And then you have to buy that. And it isn't, I mean, you don't have to buy the property, but you'd have to buy it. But that's what we're doing on the Port of Entry is we have to have it. We're having a 300-foot drainage easement on the west side of that road. Yeah. Then the Douglas Port of Entry, we're doing the right-of-way acquisition. And that's with the City of Douglas funds.
Is that part of that eight million too?
That's part of the eight million. So we have a contract with Tierra Right-of-Way to get the. So on the Port of Entry, the right-of-way cost from Tierra is 576, 408. And that's just for them to do title escrow appraisals and phase one environmental. And then plus the property.
So is that as long as you're going up towards 80 or is that along the border?
No, that's just change range itself.
Just change range.
So it's a 200-foot of right-of-way for the road and then a 300-foot drainage easement.
So that's not her funds, that'll be a grant?
That'd be the grant. That's why you have it up here. And the 4119 Activity State Grant, that is from the, a million dollars that the city is giving, yeah, giving us. For the project. And then they will also pay the cost of any property we need to acquire, but we won't know that until after we get it, the phase is done.
Okay.
And you have the IGA are ready for that.
Getting back to Kansas Settlement, I think you said it's 20 miles long.
Correct.
And one mile of it is, is going to flood on a pretty regular basis. It arranges.
Just at that one location, but there's other locations that also flood, yes.
So the long-term plan is that it's just going to continue to run over the road for a mile wide?
Correct.
Would your wife's deteriorating?
Um, because of the amount of traffic on it and that it's, there's a lot of farm activity on that, and so it's because of the functions carrying, you know.
So that, that's the thing when you have a road and it currently like two tons versus whatever. What is that road, the amount that it's supposed to carry?
Forty tons. Forty tons is a legal limit on any state hot road.
And are, are the farm vehicles more than that?
No, no, they're forty tons.
Forty tons, okay.
We have oversized loads that go on Davis Road outweigh. Some of those are a million pounds.
So yesterday coming back, there was a huge, like half of the warehouse.
It went off the road?
Yeah, yeah, that was fun.
And so that's for the Douglas Port of Entry, but that will be, the one and a half million will be coming from the City of Douglas. And Davis Road Construction says at mile plus five and 13. And we have a CBS grant for, it's a type, well, there's 2.89 million. That's, the project cost is about six and a half million. And we're updating the project design on that. That project is from 2015. You know, we're just, you know, we have, we have projects on the shelf that we can do and that one's from 2015, definitely. And Activity Nine is just staff, survey, operating supplies, traffic signs, fencing material.
Um, was it a year ago when Kansas Settlement Road was closed for how long, two weeks?
Kansas.
No, it was longer.
Yeah, it was 2022, I think, that we had the floods for 21.
And that's about two weeks it was closing, I see.
It was shallow, I mean, people sort of drove through, but yes, it was closed. And it's not a high velocity. Yeah. I mean, it was thirty, forty million just to try to get all that water underneath the road.
I see.
Yeah, very tight.
So the, the option is to fix it every how, how many years?
Asphalt usually lasts 20 to 30 years. So every 20 to 30 years, you do need to.
Or a few years, it's still going to last 20, 30 years?
Yes, because it's been submerged for the last 30 years theoretically.
So doesn't really, doesn't really affect its life. Now, it seems like it would, it would erode the shoulders and the edge of the pavement.
It's such a volvo loss, you know, that it doesn't show those. It's just the inundated with water that's more damage than erosion of that location. Then Davis Road Right-of-Way. This project's been there since 2021. We've been acquiring right-of-way on Davis Road. And this is from Central to 191. We had a grant of 400,000 that we're spending down. And this is to acquire the right-of-way. We've already closed on 12 properties. We have three more that we still, which, two we've already negotiated that we have, that we have to pay for and one we're still negotiating with. And that's for the acquisition and the right-of-way on the property for that fund account.
What is the 400,000?
There was a grant for the right-of-way, federal highways.
Okay, it's not on this slide?
No, it's, no, it's not.
So the revenue that's in parentheses there, that means you're expecting that?
Yes, it's a reimbursable grant.
Okay.
So that's just, that's what's left of the 164, A95 or the 404. We need to, we have left in that. And it might cost a little bit more than that for their acquiring the right-of-way, but we have that in professional services contingency in fund account. Then Motion Road's the next one. This is a six million dollar, we put these, this in a separate fund account because this is a six million dollar grant. We have approximately 5.3 million left. And this is to acquire right-of-way and design on Motion Road. The right-of-way for the title and the presales for 49 properties is 1.2 million dollars. Approximately a million dollars then to acquire the right-of-way. And we'll have about three million left for construction. That rule will do Garden Valley Road.
Do you or will you have a way that that right-of-way acquisition is, is that, that money, that 1.2 million, how that's broken up? Like between, you said, how many costs were there? Was there titles?
Yes, that would all be, yes, we would have that. It's from title, appraisals, and then negotiation with the property owners and a phase one environmental. That would all be.
Is this north of 90?
It's south of 90, from 90 to Hurford Road. About 7.8 miles.
Is that, whose district is that?
Yours.
Mine.
And the construction on that is about 50 million to actually do the road. With, there's a lot of flooding there from Car Canyon, Hundred Canyon, Ramsey Canyon. So there's bridge structures that will be going in and updating the culverts so that we have all-weather. So our all-weather criteria is that you can have a foot of water going over the road so you can still drive through it, but it's not three feet ago going over. So it'll be all-weather. Because last year that road was shut down because of damage on the road.
Yeah.
Drainage.
Has anybody ever tried to get a government discount from the title company? Or is it just gravy for them? Because they're doing the same thing over and over. They're, they're, they're boiler plating a zillion titles.
Yeah, and we don't get a government discount from private companies. Because it's, you know, pioneer titles.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, here's your title company. Yeah.
They weren't the other title company, Alan.
Identity used to be here, but they're not here anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a question for you. If we were to try to put a road in that was on BLM land or Forest Service land or State Trust land, how do you go about, do you have to buy? You have to buy it from them?
So we have BLM and State Trust land.
Unraveling.
Yes.
So what, what is the general?
Usually takes one to two years.
They go out, they get a real estate agent, they do appraisals or something?
Well, we do the appraisals.
We do, yes.
But on State Trust land and BLM, you know, you have to do your archaeological surveys and then you have to actually buy the right of way.
Got you. What are the laws of title companies? Any title company in the state could be the title company in this county? I wonder.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's federal rules on how to acquire properties. You know, there's, because they're having, we're using federal funds on part of this project at some point. And so anytime you acquire right-of-way on a project, if you have $1 of federal fund on that, maybe you have to use the federal requirements to acquire the right-of-way.
I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with monopoly. And there's a monopoly in a warrior. So it shouldn't be, our job should be to not have monopolies.
No, I agree.
Well, thank you.
There's a lot of monopolies in Coates County.
So there's nothing out of it? It's only enough for.
Well, it might be worse, I mean, it might be.
It's only enough for one, one business, business for one guy.
And Flood Control District, and this just happens to be a photo of Leslie Canyon Pond. That's the inlet that's in Douglas. Okay, then the next slide is Activities for the Flood Control District.
Do we, do we, do we pay on this?
We're okay, just stick to information. No decision.
All right.
We're going to let it, let it go this time.
All right.
What is that, the flip?
Yeah, I understand about the open meeting aspect. We can't vote, I understand that.
Right.
Yeah. Can we comment?
Yeah.
Okay, let them all comment when it's.
So it's just the different activities, the infemoral stream monitoring. That's year nine on the Palominas Recharge Project that we have. That's the 13 different batons that are east of Palominas Road. It has the different aspects of recharge with infiltration trenches and dry wells. In Coyote Wash, this is a recharge project that will help deflating on Motion Road but north of Highway 90. At the location that someone died a few years ago on Gading Box Down the Stream. So that's Coyote Wash. There we do have grants for that. The project is about six and a half million and we do have grants. If we, the grants are still there because, you know, grants are in the flux right now with the federal government. We do have grants for that. Then Horseshoe Dry Erosion, that's a detention base that was put in by the rancher that the county now owns. And there was an outlet that got eroded out from a storm event a few years ago. And this is to repair that.
Where's Horseshoe come?
It's on Jack Ladd's Branch, south of Highway 92.
Okay.
East of the river. And then Three Canons is, that's the recharge, recharge research. And we're applying for a grant from the Arizona Smart Grant from WIFA. And that's to decrease flooding by increasing infiltration that then homeowners could use on their property to help them decrease the flooding across their property. And then 4106 is USGS monitoring, that stream monitoring, different locations in the San Pedro Valley. And it's, some of that is, that cost is shared with USGS. Our cost is 125,000. But those, some of those locations have been monitored since, like, 1905.
And Horseshoe, I'm sorry, just I'm trying to get it, where's that? Oh, that's that, I mean, Three Canons.
Three Canons is off of Palominas Road. And Three Canyon Road.
So it's like split between your district and one.
Okay.
In Riverstone, that is east of Palominas Road. And that's a recharge project with the City of Saravista. The City of Saravista is doing the design. They're finishing with phase two. They're, they're starting to do the design because they're finishing with the phase two that investigation on that project. So we hand that, this funds over to the city and they do the project. And the Babakamari is just a future project. We just have it as a placeholder if there's something we want to do on the Babakamari. So that property is on east of Highway 90, north of Wauchita City.
So like western?
Western.
Okay.
It's the Babakamari.
What's the nature of that future project?
We, we don't have anything right now. It's just that if we needed to, if something happened out there, when we do have a well that we monitor just for groundwater level, but we're not doing anything else.
Does it have to do with the, the garbage dump that's in Wauchita City, Al?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's a waste from that. That's quite hard to get to.
Or towards.
Towards the Robert Biggs Drive, the Babakamari, that development that went in there, it's part, it's part of that property. And then the Bisbee Affluent Property Project. That's, we have an IGA with the City of Bisbee and they have a $2 million grant to extend their pipeline down to Naco. And this is to acquire the recharge site. That would be on the west side of San Pedro River.
And where is the water, the affluent coming from?
Bisbee, City of Bisbee.
City of.
I don't pay him for it. Well, I don't think we should.
And I don't think we should either.
Is this to preserve the base flows of the San Pedro River?
It is to reserve the base flows of San Pedro River and to increase the groundwater level for the whole, the well system. And it's right, so this project would be right at the border with Mexico. So then it's helping to control the depletion of the groundwater flow there from the mines in Cannonay. Because that is, again, sometimes that is coming north. And so this will be an intercept that, intercept that groundwater depletion kind of from Cannonay.
Well, I wonder if my colleagues would want to explore revoking recognition of the sprinkle? Not that I'm asking, just, I'm just wondering.
I'm all for exploring.
Exploring. I could, month or two? I'm trying to find it in my brain. But, yeah, explore.
Explore. Explore revoking this.
I just, I just, I, I mean, you explained it to me about the buy in the affluent, I just.
It's insanity.
I, I know.
I, I think that we should explore if that's insanity. My opinion, it's insanity.
It's like we're doing a favor to get rid of the forum, right? So it's got to go somewhere.
And what are you talking about? Pumping it from way east of the river, like here. I mean, it's just not that far from here.
Yeah.
You know, what is it, a couple of miles to the, to the east of here to west of the river? West of the river, I'm down the hill, up the hill, the other side. I think we should explore if that's insanity, because I think it's insanity.
How much have they, they've put into it so far? You said they had a $2 million grant, but if we put.
That's to upset, that their $2 million grant is to upgrade some pump system they have.
So that'd be the best in a lot of money up until today in this project.
So after it's treated, why can't we just let it just like run down and just put it in the river?
Well, right now, they are just releasing it out that way. This would get it closer to the river. Arizona Water, I believe it is, also wants to purchase it as well.
It is a commodity.
It is a commodity. Water is a commodity in Arizona.
And what are they going to do? They would recharge it by their.
And get credits?
So they're.
We don't really get credits here like they do in Phoenix area because we're not, it's not an AMA there.
And why would they do it?
To, to, to bring the groundwater level back up in their wells.
In their well.
For the City of Bisbee. So provide water to the City of Bisbee.
I don't believe it. Yeah.
Hey, let's say, let's say you got the, the Wilcox Play-in. How, how deep does it ever get? How, how deep does a Wilcox Play-in ever get? A few inches, a foot, something like that?
Two or 13.
Okay, so you take that two or three feet that's, that's filling the Wilcox Play-in, you got the birds in there. And all of a sudden, you imagine this, because you're going to drill these recharge holes in the ground. And all of a sudden, you put it into the ground and now, and now the, the, the water presumably under what used, where the water used to be is now up two or three feet in the play-in. And I don't believe that that would happen at all. And it wouldn't affect any, any of the rest of the area of the county. So in my opinion, any kind of recharge we could do in reality is going to be, as I've said before, like a postage stamp on a football field, what you're going to do. And as far as raising up the water a significant amount, I don't believe it. And I don't think that we're going to get a recharge until the next ICAG. I think I've said that many times.
And where are. And where our Three Canyon project is, when those irrigation fields stopped irrigating, there's wells between them and the river that came up thirty forty feet. When it was a drastic increase in groundwater level because of the no longer pumping that onto the fields. So we know that does help to.
It isn't coming from the sky. Right? The the recharge is not coming from the sky. It's coming from underground flow from the mountain or something like that. It isn't coming from the sky. You're not going to recharge the aquifer from the sky. Not with our current levels of use and 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 precipitation. Not going to happen.
Still have the mountain front recharge that comes from the sky, mostly.
These now.
Right, from the Mississippi rivers. I'm not kidding. So I'll try to do is figure out what's what's really worthwhile doing. And Ms. Watkins has been very good about answering difficult, challenging questions. And so I don't think that that this isn't unusual. We're talking about this many times. So testing and monitoring do not produce water. Any argument? Testing and monitoring do not produce water.
Where's testing and monitoring?
It's all over the place. Stream monitoring, ephemeral stream flow monitoring, rain gauges do not produce water. And they they there might be some use in in safety. So, you know, okay, people are going to get flooded here. They need to know they're about to get flooded. And so I understand the safety aspect for it. But all these all these things that are testing do not produce water.
So I mean, the alert system is we that's tied into the National Weather Service. So we have rain gauges that are you can go online and find out how much it's rain. That goes into the National Weather Service, so they do out their alerts or keep it in. It says, you know, there's expect flash flooding and that is that they get some of that information from our alert systems. And that's our system is throughout the whole county and state.
All I'm trying to do is is point out that if you have with any environmental issue, only only successful capitalistic countries can afford the extra cost of anything having to do with saving the planet. And if we don't have a thriving economy, we can't. We got to be really careful about what we what we try to do environmentally.
I mean, you know, the city, Phoenix and Maricopa, Tucson districts. They're getting their recharge from the Colorado River. I mean, and they're helping bringing up there. There's certain places in Phoenix that the water table is now like ten feet, isolated locations.
And they're just growing so much. It's just I I don't know. I don't think it's sustaining.
But because they're eating less water than they were when there was a whole bunch of farms up there.
They still really?
Yes, they are.
Because they have lakes.
But they're growing, so I'm not sure because they're still growing.
Yeah.
They lost their gunnel, their their allotment that was going to Pinellas County and growing all that alfalfa. Lost their gunnels.
They already blew it.
So you go out there and that's why that that's why they're building suburbia. There's no money in alfalfa anymore. You can't do it. And it let's say you got a choice between growing alfalfa, however much water that uses versus growing suburbia, which is much less water and they pay much more taxes.
It's like such, I mean, such a mess in Phoenix. Yeah, you're right. And it's just they're going to get to the point where it's going to get so thick and hot, you can't even live there.
And then the next project is the forty one eleven. That's Bay Acres. This is in design, finishing that design up.
Now, Bay Acres is falling from fifty from fifteen, or is it a little bit more like Eighteenth Street? All the way to Washington. I mean, on Washington.
It's Palm Grove Wash. So it's the Bay Acres Colonial itself. This would be a berm in a ditch on the east side of Bay Acres itself. Diverting the water, the floodwater into Palm Grove Wash and then taking it down to Wide Water Draw. And so it's. Is it what?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth street. Yeah, twenty fifth street. To the highway.
And that development is going all the way to the mountain of Rucker Canyon ish that road?
Not this road. That's a different.
It's a different project?
And right, yeah. Bay Acres is north of Douglas.
You showed us something that was that showed the like in the first couple of slides, something was an erosion of the.
Leslie Canyon.
Leslie Canyon, okay. Does that water go to?
Bay Acres?
Bay Acres.
No.
Okay.
This water is pretty much on the south side of Highway eighty going out of there.
I mean, what it does, I mean, it is a mess, but like it has, it's like.
Well, Bay Acres, it's in the flood zone. So a lot of those people, in fact, we had a call yesterday about someone asking if we have funds to help him because his trailer got flooded last year and it moved it off the brakes a little, you know? So he doesn't have the funds to relevel it, but you know, you don't have those funds.
More cheaper cities in the same.
More cheaper cities in the same thing.
Right.
And we did the next one is Leslie Canyon Ponds. That's in design because that's a regulatory dam from ADWR. And so we're finishing the design this calendar year and then hope to construct to lower that outlet structure on that. And the Palm Marine Watershed, that's a watershed for Palm Marine Road. To find out what some options are to help the flooding on Palm Marine Road. Then the watershed studies, that's for the Wilcox Basin. That's in a that's a brick grant that we have for a hundred and eighty seven thousand. That's the cost of the design is two hundred and ninety nine thousand. And that's for the cost of the watershed study on the Wilcox Basin and finding locations that would be applicable for recharge. So what they're doing is that they have they did the watershed study for every all strings over five hundred CFS. And then taking the soil from the NRCS and the different aspects of the ground, they can pick on a forty acre parcel. If it has high potential or low potential for recharge, then we will pick five locations there and go out for more studies to do recharge.
Now, and when you talk about recharge, it's just collecting the water that may fall or coming from other sources, right?
From a stream.
From a stream.
The most because all the monitoring that we're doing in Palominas on the recharge ones that we have for the Palominas that around the school. We have that data to say, okay, infiltration trenches work better than dry wells. So we use that data that we have there and what we discovered from there for the Wilcox and Douglas Basins. So we want to try to do any dry wells over there because they have they don't work very well. The trenches work better. And then the Coyote Wash one that we have and the Horseshoe Draw, we have monitoring downstream from the project. And you get more of the recharge into the groundwater, just letting it go back where it naturally does. But if you have a recharge basin instead of the water flowing out like in two hours, if it slowly puts it out over twenty four hours, you get more recharge into the ground. Which is just going down to the river and.
How do you do you think it goes?
It depends on what the gravel is. And that's where you do. That's why we have that when you do the studies that you can find out is there a layer of clay there that it's not going to grow because if there's a clay layer, then it goes down and has to go lateral. So some of it can go down to three hundred feet into the ground. It will it will get to the groundwater.
How do you?
Because we have wells that we're measuring the water level in the wells and those wells are coming up. So that's how we.
But where were you in twenty ten? Who were you working?
A dot.
Okay. Do you remember that there was an attempted water district by the that there was a spur off San Pedro? Partnership, San Pedro River Partnership. You remember that that went through the ballot?
Not really.
Then then I will I will sometime in the not too distant future, provide my colleagues with what I consider to be evidence of that. In spite of all this, we're running out of water in San Pedro River. They were like certain people were ready to export our water. And I think that I could show that to you. And I think Ms. Lowenstein, did you save a copy of that PowerPoint that that Kathleen can look at? It was it was several pages. Okay, so ask her for a PowerPoint that I that I gave up last week.
Okay.
And you weren't here.
Yeah.
So the point is that I think that that everything that you sincerely hope to do is going to be used by the forces of darkness to justify, oh, we've done such a great job recharging. Now we can sell our water to Tucson and Phoenix. That's what I think because it's worth billions of dollars. And I'm suspicious of.
And I think that's not going to happen to Douglas. And we're going to sell the water. We're not going to sell the water.
Douglas doesn't have it.
Yes, it doesn't have water. Well, it's an AMA though. It's an active management area, so that restricts what you can do with the water.
What they really want is the water on this side because the water table is the river.
Well, I know I've obviously served the service.
No, from Douglas?
Yeah.
Well, maybe maybe the people that want to.
How much HIRF revenue goes to your department versus to public works? You get HIRF revenue?
Yeah, I'm funded by HIRF and flood control district funds.
No general fund?
No general funds.
So out of the HIRF money, how much comes to you? So we get nine million?
The budget is shared, so it's you know, it's shared with you, but I'm not commenting with the.
Example here, this this one million in wages, right?
Yeah.
Right, so that's paid for by what? That's all HIRF?
Well, the for Fund two fifty one. Fund two fifty one?
Uh, yes.
Yes, that's HIRF because HIRF isn't only just maintaining the roads, it's doing all your signs and survey and right of way, you know, we're still applying right of way.
So all right, what I'm what I'm getting at is you're looking at a one one and a quarter million dollars if you add everything up here. If you go all the way down benefits, you're at one and a half. So that one and a half comes out of HIRF.
Correct. And HIRF is distributed on the different aspects of the points. State statute.
No, I know how that works. I'm I'm trying to figure out how we distribute her funds within the county once we get the HIRF revenue. So you're given.
Jackie and Jason sit down together and they worked the budget out. To put to for what the HIRF funds are for different projects going on to make sure that we can get the permission done for what they need.
You see, before twenty eighteen, when the department split, it used to be Highway and Flood Plane Department, Flood Plane Department, followed in the county engineering. And then in twenty eighteen, operations was split out and put with solid waste. Then the revenue department was kept as engineering resources and it became the solid waste public works. But it's always been HIRF funds has gone to and it's still the same function. It's two different departments now.
And so how many are under your department or under this budget?
FTE for, I think it's eighteen.
That's just engineering or is that?
Well, it's. I have I have a twenty five staff.
Okay.
Some of that's blood and some of that's HIRF. But the HIRF fund staff is the county surveyor, this two staff, the people putting up signs. So we make our sign and put up the signs, the lab that we have to test the material. And then the design, the engineers that do the design and the acquiring right of way. And the inspectors, because when people want a driveway or utilities in the right of way, they get a right of way permit. And the inspectors get out. So that's all this stuff that's under engineering.
So it appears that the first six pages of HIRF and then the last nine pages are flood control district.
Yeah, well, actually, yes, so.
And there's the most.
Yeah, so the last two pages or last two or three pages are Davis Road and Mosin Road, which are plants. Yeah. I tried to make it a little different this time so that the bottom net totals are just that button instead of it all being all mixed up like somebody.
That's fine.
Make it a little easier.
I I think it's very well written. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to figure out that the first six pages were remaining or something else. Yes, indeed. So I would so it is the like the following nine of flood control. Like you said, there's two more pages after that. So thank you very much.
So then a watershed study, Wilcox Basin, then activity nine, staffing supplies. And we do have five hundred thousand dollars in there for the studies in the Douglas watershed. And to clean drainage channels. And the Douglas watershed would be for the port of entry. And then contingency, we have just over a million dollars for emergency disasters. If there's storm repair that we need to do, that was on a contingency there. And then we also transfer to other agencies, meaning the county of the Saravista Douglas with the city. They want to help with some flood stuff, then we do give them money also. And we've given money to Douglas and Saravista and we're meeting with Wilcox this next month to find out what they want.
Yes. Does the county or some entity have the facilities and stuff to make sandbags?
Yes.
But that's part of part of what some.
That's part of HIRF funds.
Okay.
They have sand delivered to the road yards and provide sandbags. And then the property owners could go and fill up the sandbag.
Okay.
And then the public, so we do have a record record Wash study with US Army Corps of Engineers that we just notified yesterday that that grant is still on board and it is going and we will do the watershed study for Rucker and flooding in El Frida.
Good question. What did you just say about the public service?
The sandbags.
Are free.
They're free. They're free. It's a public service for people to.
Okay, so as long as they come out there and fill them up, they can have all pretty much all the sandbags they need. And then what about the Army Corps of Engineers?
They're doing a watershed study on Rucker this by El Frida. Because El Frida keeps getting flooded and that's where we do have a levy, but the levy is only a five year design, so it floods more. And they're doing a first level watershed study and then for about three hundred thousand. And then there's another grant for eight hundred thousand if that one comes through.
Did you have a question? No, what's the difference between the work that the Army Corps of Engineers do and you do or one of these contracting companies like Fuller Hydrology? As far as what their requirements are and stuff like that? Because I knew that there are such things Army Corps of Engineers and their name surfaces every once in a while. Could you tell us about what they do and how they work and how much they charge and stuff like that?
Well, this is a free grant. And it's typically a fifty fifty split, but because El Frida is a economically disadvantaged area, they're paying a hundred percent of the tax.
It's it's not.
No.
So it's just it's just considered, is it like mapped out or is it just, how do we, how do they know that it's an economic, you know?
Because of the census maps.
Okay, the census maps, how we do. Because of the writing and everything. What it does, like last summer in Florida, especially on where they wanted to put the solar farm.
Yeah. Yeah. And so that so the Corps of Engineers has different programs that we can qualify for. And we try to go for the ones that's not going to toss the same.
So what's what's the team that come in above the Army Corps of Engineers? Is it the Army?
I don't know.
I don't know.
It is.
I think it is, yeah.
It is. It falls under the Chief Engineer of the Army.
And that's who our letters go to. Well.
And then he's under he's underneath the falls up underneath. I'm trying to remember which major commands that it is, but it's probably Forces Command or North Com or something like Northern Command, something like that.
It's not like the Federal Reserve. The Federal or the.
No, no, it's an army. It's an army. It's an army. Falls under.
Yeah, and so and they come out and do the studies.
Yeah.
Do they want to do that?
Well, we keep applying.
Engineers a Colonel or a one star?
I don't know.
I was curious.
It's out of Los Angeles is who we respond to.
This did a lot of stuff with him under Pat Schroder.
Any other questions? No, thanks for coming in, Ms. Oh, so you do have a question?
Question, yeah. So the flood control gives a lot. And then would you say we benefit? Or is it just that you're controlling water? So it's nine minutes.
The flood control district main function is National Flood Insurance Program. Because if you don't have a flood control district that's monitoring and giving out flood use permits, then people won't be able to get federally backed loans via. then people won't be able to get federally backed loans via FHA. So that's, one of the positions is for the NFIP National Flood Insurance Program, for homeowners to get flood insurance.
I'm not trying to eliminate the flood control district. I'm trying to zero out the amount of money that goes from the taxpayers to the flood control district this year. To lower taxes. And you still.
But it's really a dollar.
Pardon?
You have to put it to a dollar. You can't go to zero.
Okay, then we'll put it to a dollar.
Sure.
Well, and the thing is that some of our projects are three or four million dollars. And we get about just over two million dollars in taxes. And so to have a, you know, to pay for a five million dollar project, you have to save that money to be able to pay for the project.
We have saved.
And we have saved enough from spending it. But we're spending it this year.
I know. Maybe, well, maybe you won't. We'll see, right?
Well, okay, that, that, but it seems like, every time I look, there's, everything's a flood plane.
There's a lot of flooding, yeah. And so you had, and someone asked, I think you wanted a map from Terry, and I told me to do one that would have all the flood planes in your district. And then also that would have the maintained roads, if they're paved, non-paved dirt roads, and then the other dirt roads.
Because there is an area, I mean, I don't know why we're doing anything. That's just north of the Vaucluse. That used to be those, you know, estates, it was going to have a lake and it was, and then I went out there, we're still, there's nothing out there, but we're still like.
We're coming up with a list of roads that we could drop. There, yes, there are roads out there that we shouldn't be braving. Okay.
Okay. I was thinking, there's nobody out here, but it would look really nice. And what they're doing is then going out and doing, going to the farmers, we're using them as dump sites and putting all the trash there. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
We good?
Yeah.
All right, next meeting is going to be on elections budget, which will be in eight minutes. So we're adjourned.